Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, I want to welcome everyone who's here tonight and everyone who's watching us at home. Real briefly, I'll go over our agenda for this evening. First, we'll start with the consent agenda, which will consist of the minutes from the December 10th meeting. Then we'll go to the master alternative sign plan for Einstein Brothers Bagels. And then we'll have a site plan design review, preliminary and final plats for the Colonial Hills Community of Christ Church. That being said, we'll move to our consent agenda, which is the minutes from the December 10th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll move on to the master alternative sign plan for Einstein Brother Bagels. Mr. Hawley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The request, excuse me, before you tonight is for a master alternative sign plan. The property is Einstein Bagels. I think most of you are probably familiar with it. It is located at 210 Northwest 7th Highway. That is on the east side of Northwest 7th Highway, approximately 142 feet south of Northwest Vesper, as shown upon the overhead. The plan that is up on the overhead is also, thank you Scott, is also located in your staff report towards the end, just after the color renderings of Einstein Brother Bagel sign program. The alternative sign plan would allow them to place a wall and an awning sign on the north and south facades, both of which do not face a public right-of-way nor are they over a main entrance. It is also for the height clearance bar pole sign to allow for commercial messaging for Einstein's on the sign face, as opposed to simply the height. And then there are two directional signs that will exceed the size requirement provided within the sign code. Looking at page four and five, on page four, there is a master alternative sign plan design criteria, and it shows what you will see when you look at that is that they do meet the requirements for their square footages with the exception of the directional signs on the north and south facade. But other than that, they are within the sign code requirements. Again, you have the color renderings, and I'm happy to put any renderings up that you would like to see. But other than that, staff is recommending approval with four conditions. And those four conditions, as can be found on page six of six, really talk to the directional signs meeting the sign code, as opposed to allowing them through this alternative sign code plan. It speaks to removing the messaging that is on the height limitation sign. And then the commercial messages be removed from the awnings above only the drive-through window. So that wouldn't exclude the ones that they're requesting over the side entrance doors. And the reasoning behind that was because they currently have signs on both the south and north facades evidently, and so those signs really don't add to any of the signage that they currently have. It just improves that signage. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hawley? I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation?
Hi, my name is Dan Motish. I'm with Acne Sign and here representing Einstein Brothers Bagel. And what you have in front of you is their, kind of their newer identity, national identity program for their signage and their package. And this is one of the sites that they've identified as needing some updating of their signage there. As far as the conditions, there's no objections to any of those, so we'd be fine with meeting all those. And I guess I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
So you're okay with taking the, or with changing that height sign so that it's just...
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we'll satisfy all the stipulations.
And shrinking the other two signs?
Correct.
I think those are the main things.
Yep.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any discussion? Bring it back up here for a motion.
I guess I do have a question.
All right.
If they're agreeable to comply with the ordinance, then why is it an alternative sign request?
Because there are still some signs on the east, I'm sorry, on the north and the south that require the alternate sign plan. Staff is just in favor of granting those.
Those are the wall signs that they were talking about?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Is that correct? Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move...
Mr. Graham.
...to approve. Should I get the right one? ASP-11-12-3741, master alternative sign plan for Einstein Brothers Bagels.
With the four conditions?
With the four staff conditions.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alternative sign plan's been approved. Thank you. We'll move on to Colonial Hills Church. We've got the site plan, the preliminary plat, and the final plat. We can hear all of that at one time and then vote on it separately. I think that'd be the way to go. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Again, before you this evening, our three requests from Colonial Hills Community of Christ Church. The first is a site plan design review to walk through those details, and then followed by the preliminary plat and final plat to create one lot on approximately 4.84 acres, located at 3539 Southwest 7th Highway. It's on the west side of 7th Highway, between Moreland School Road and Liggett Road. It is a currently existing church. The church is looking to add a two-story in height, 7,400 square foot building addition to the current church building, which is approximately just over 9,000 square feet. So with that, the applicant does need to go through the site plan design review process because of the size threshold that's been surpassed, as well as a plating process because it is an existing unplated lot. They're not looking at subdividing the lot specifically, just retaining what they have currently, and again, making that a formally platted lot. The proposed application that I want to walk through first is a site plan design review, and does include an alternative compliance landscape plan. The applicant and the representatives are here this evening. I'm sure they can get into a lot more detail about those, especially if you have any questions on that part of it in particular, as well as the design and such of the addition. Maybe a little hard to see all the detail on this one, but this is essentially the full picture. You can see the gray is the outline of the building is the existing church facility. And then the white addition, you can kind of see there, it says addition to the right or to the east, with the east-facing portion being the most prominent portion of their addition. And again, not really a great deal of other changes, other than the alternative compliance landscape plan they're requesting, and then addition of sidewalk, you can see meandering on the east of the property along 7th Highway, and then modifications to the storm ward detention at the southeast corner of the property. Page four of nine in the site plan and design review report, parking is not an issue. They need 65 parking spaces, and there are 150 existing, so they exceed, even with the addition, added space and such, they still well exceed the minimum there. The sidewalk is required to be installed or financial guarantee submitted prior to city council approval of the final plat. As far as I know, earlier today, they've not submitted that financial guarantee, but they're in the process of doing so in advance of the city council meeting next Tuesday. Screening, we have kind of our standard screening language in there in terms of mechanical equipment, other things that may be attributable to the addition. Same with trash enclosure, things of that sort, kind of your standard comments with that. The landscaping, do want to highlight, you can see that large square to the west, left side of the screen, with their access back towards Moreland School, or excuse me, Moreland Ridge Middle School. The church has a use agreement with the Blue Spring School District for school-related use of the open space that you see there on the west side, west of the parking lot adjacent to the western property line. So in order to maintain access and use of the open space, the church is requesting a relief from that buffer requirement. And because of that, again, it diminishes the amount of total plant units there to place on the property, again, because that is included in our calculation for total number of plant units for landscape plan. So that's why they're requesting relief, because of that special circumstances through the alternative compliance landscape plan. If you were to include the existing plant units and others that will be installed as part of that sidewalk, kind of beautification along 7th Highway, those are located in the right-of-way. Technically, the UDC does not allow those to be counted, but we did include that, kind of showing you the differences between what the UDC would call, for example, their buffer. Is the buffer B on the east side along 7th Highway. There are 74 plant units short, but if they include everything that's planted in the right-of-way, just again, for functional purposes, they're over, they're three units, plant units over. So they do meet that buffer if you include the right-of-way plant units. So just kind of FYI with that part of it. Technically does not meet it, but functionally does. In terms of building design, again, the applicant and the representatives can discuss probably a little more detail and intelligence than I can with what they're proposing specifically related to that. But the color renderings are included in your staff report. I'm pulling those up here just momentarily. That center elevation is the east elevation. That's the most prominent one that'd be facing directly to 7th Highway. You can see what's being proposed there, kind of the end gable design, and then some added features associated with the cross, and then the artwork essentially on the, above that. Again, the applicant can get a little bit more detail with that, but the addition will match the existing building, as you can see here in terms of scale, material types, and design. So it is a fitting addition aesthetically and architecturally speaking. And with that, there are only four conditions that staff is recommending, and staff is recommending approval of the request, even with the alternative compliance landscape plan. Again, they're related to some of the basics that we typically see with the sidewalk, the screening of utilities, mechanical items, and then again, just confirmation of landscaping when it does go in, that we do the inspection, it does meet the plan as submitted here and approved this evening. With that, Mr. Chairman, just jump into the preliminary plat and final plat, if that's okay, and kind of take all the questions together. Staff has recommended approval of the preliminary plat and final plat with just three conditions. Things I did want to highlight in particular, page four of that staff report, talking about storm ward detention, I did mention that just briefly. Just to orient it north-south there for everybody, north being up. The property actually does have some storm ward detention facilities already, even without it being platted. Again, that's typically something that is a larger hurdle to jump over when plating is required, but the church already has some storm ward detention capabilities on the property. Storm ward report was submitted, and they are looking at doing some expansion, modification to that. And it was submitted to the city and was accepted by the Public Works Department, so they are all set to move ahead with what you see there. Street improvements, a traffic report was also submitted. It was determined that the church's addition is not considered, I guess, an expansion of occupancy and of users, but merely a relocation of existing spaces. So the amount of traffic, the facility will not increase based on that. Therefore, the traffic report findings have been approved by the Public Works Department as well as MODAT, since it is located along a state route. With that, again, there are three pretty basic conditions, while those again refers to that sidewalk improvement, financial guarantee prior to being approved by city council. Sort of kind of go quite long without coming for breath, but if you have any questions for staff, certainly try to answer those best I can.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allen? If I could, on the, back on the landscaping, the buffer area is only the part of the site that's adjacent to the SF-7, is that right?
This is zone general business. There is buffer required along the east side, and then, referring back to the staff report here. Yes, there is a portion you can see there.
And most of that SF-7 is actually the school.
Right, and it's all, it's this area back here.
Except for just one lot there to the south, I think, is a residential lot, they're right on the south.
Right, right to the south is just this area. And then to north, it's this whole area. I think they're showing actually pretty clearly with SF-7, you can see here up to this point. And the same back here, these residential properties.
And there's already, at least according to the drawing, there is plant units there between that one residence and the lot. So even though we're saying...
They did submit kind of a pre and post. Let me see here. Yes, there is quite a bit to the south. This is the existing landscaping, is that, is that right? Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is the existing landscaping. So yes, there's quite a bit on the south.
So the, well, but most of that is adjacent to the church, which is also, another church, which is general business.
True, and as you can see here, appreciate them showing this, but you can see a majority of it is on, not on their property. So again, it's one of those things where functionally, it's there, but code-wise, it's not on their property and therefore not attributable to them.
And the part we're waving to the west and the north, even though it's adjacent to SF-7, it's in reality adjacent to the school district.
Correct.
So we're not really giving up a border between some houses.
Hence, again, staff is agreeable with their request for the alternative compliance landscape plan, and recommending that before you this evening, exactly.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes, certainly.
To understand we're not sliding a homeowner somewhere along the way.
Right, exactly. And that's why I was kind of trying to make a distinction between code-wise, you know, you have, see the table there, and then, but functionally, what they're proposing works.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Allen? Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
My name is Gary Warner, and I'm the architect for the project, and this is Elizabeth Oding, who's also in our office. We've got all kinds of props here.
We like props, so that's good.
Yeah, well, good, good. The idea of the design is not to look like an addition. I mean, we want to match what's there, and so we'll use, this is the brick that's on the building now, and we will match it. And the same shingles. There is a little bit of siding, and that'll be the siding.
And they're matching the roof product as well, it's timber-like.
So, other than that, I think Mr. Allen pretty much presented the case. Are there any other questions that we can... Do we have any questions for the applicant? Looks like we don't this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bring it back up here for discussion. We talked about the site plan first, take a vote, and then we'll talk about the plating.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the Colonial Hills Lot 1 Community of Christ Church Site Plan Design Review, SPDR 1112-3725, subject to the four staff comments.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan has been approved, and we move on to the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the final plat, PF, or preliminary, or preliminary plat, rather, PF, no, PP, 1112-3724 for Colonial Hills Lot 1, subject to the staff comments.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Preliminary plat has been approved, and the final plat.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the final plat, PF 1112-3733 for Colonial Hills Lot 1, also subject to staff comments.
Second. I have a motion and a second again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that has been approved, and we'll go to the council for final approval. And that being said, we move on to any other business. First thing, we have currently no agenda items for our next meeting. Correct. So unless someone has a desire for camaraderie, or continuing education, or something like that, any discussion about whether we should be here or not? Seeing none, I'm going to assume that we're all okay with canceling the meeting on the 28th.
Yes.
We will have items in February, so we'll have lots of chance to get together.
And Mr. Chairman, as I explained to you earlier today, and for benefit of everybody else, this is kind of one of those, this, the second meeting in January is always an artifact of the holidays. When we have a application deadline over the holidays, we typically don't get things submitted. So therefore, kind of following the timeline, the second meeting in January is the thing, is the meeting that suffers, if you'd call it suffering. But that's the meeting that then nothing submitted for it. So unless there's a continuation of something, we typically don't have a meeting, second meeting in January. So it's not for lack of trying. We'll certainly have things in February. As we saw, you had certainly had several things here tonight, so simply just a remnant of the holiday season.
And since we're not going to have a meeting on January 28th, we do have an issue that is coming up very fast approaching, and that is the National Conference, National Planning Conference, and that is deadlines to get registered to that would be before the following meeting.
Yes.
So we need now to discuss that, and that will be in Chicago this year. Mr. Allen says that we're going to fly rather than drive.
Yes, the, those of you that have attended, and we've discussed it in the past, the American Plan Association, APA, is, over the last few years, was trying to condense, I know Mr. Graham and I experienced this firsthand, the 12-hour marathon sessions, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They condensed what typically was a five-day session or conference into three, three and a half. They've now gotten away from that, perhaps, or I'm not sure why, other than perhaps they heard from us saying, please, no more 12-hour days, back-to-back. But because of that, they've stretched it out back to five days now, Saturday through Wednesday. So consider that when you're looking at options for that week. It's Saturday, April 13th to Wednesday, April 17th. Things start off right away Saturday morning, so we would fly out Friday, the 12th. I say we can fly now because price-wise, we were looking at, since it was in Chicago, perhaps bringing more people and driving, things of that sort, but because it's five days, five days of a hotel, five nights of a hotel in downtown Chicago gets pricey quickly. If it was only three nights, you know, we might have been able, financially, been able to bring maybe more people and then drive, and that. But we're looking at, one of our planners, Lauren Gowdy, is newly AICP, newly certified, so she will be attending from staff, and then we're looking for one planning commissioner, similar to what we did last year, when I believe Commissioner Haney went with Mike Peterman. So Lauren Gowdy is the one who will be leading the way from staff, so we'll look for one other planning commissioner, join her. It'd be Friday, the 12th, kind of that evening, to Wednesday, the 17th.
And I highly recommend anybody who hasn't been to one of these, who can work this into their schedules, to volunteer and sign up to do this. It's really an experience that you don't want to miss.
Yeah, the city is able, again, to cover, you know, per diem, flight, and travel to and from the airport, hotel, and registration. So it's, I would say, all-inclusive, but it's not, you know, there really isn't much, if anything, out of your pocket. There are certain, there's some extra workshops that cost, you know, during this, the conference that would be something you'd have to consider, but anyway, so take into consideration, the only thing would be your time. That would be a cost, certainly. Like I said, it's five days now instead of three or three and a half. So it's something to weigh in as well.
So you would need to know...
By the end of the month.
By the end of the month, if anybody is interested in attending, and at that point, I think we'll give preference to somebody who hasn't been on one before. If we have more than one of those, we'll just draw a name out of a hat.
Yeah, sounds good. And just let Karen, I guess, just let Karen know, just an email or a phone call. Bring me questions about it too, in terms of, you know, you know, where are we staying, you know, things like that. We tried to include it here, the conference hotel, the, it's at the Hyatt Regency in Chicago, if anybody's ever been there. I have not, but that's where the conference itself is, and that's the primary hotel. So that's the thing that fills up quickly, I think, is, are the hotels. So the sooner we know, the better, and we can get those plans made. And Jim made a good point earlier today, that we just got the other notice for the state conference, which is in October. So if, you know, we have two or three folks are interested and you don't get selected, or if you're thinking, boy, I can't take five days and go to Chicago, you could spend two, two and a half days and go to Branson in mid-October.
[inaudible]
But the one last year, staff, several staff attended because it was in Kansas City, and the registration is much more reasonable. Again, it's still some time out of your life, obviously, to attend, but there's an opportunity, even with somebody attending, you know, one staff and one planning commissioner to Chicago, that's a new budget year, or there's an opportunity perhaps to have at least one, maybe, maybe two other planning commissioners attend this October. But I think it's the first time they've had it in Branson. They've had it in, they kind of used to rotate Kansas City, St. Louis, Springfield, just kind of did a tour, and everybody started to get tired of that. And then they did Columbia one year, and now they're doing it at Branson. The quality, I think, has actually been getting better and better subsequent years. So if anybody has attended in the past, it's been a lot better. Recently, we've had some of the folks, if you go on the planning.org website, the APA, and look at the conference schedule, a lot of the speakers, like the keynote speakers, preliminary speakers, folks that we had at the state conference last year. So that's a plus to be near Chicago with where the APA headquarters are, is that we were able to get some of these bigger-name speakers, so. Anyway, the point is, think about that too. If April doesn't work for you, and you're still, you're actually interested in this one, one way or the other, just let us know about that too, and we'll kind of, we'll try to track that as well. I think, Jim, you attend that typically. So we usually have one staff, maybe two go to that as well.
Very good. Anything else that you need to discuss this evening?
Other than, we're hoping to get a contract in the next, hopefully, next city council meeting, if not then, February 4th, for the comprehensive plan and UDC update consultant contract. So we'll have an announcement once that is going forward to the city council, let everybody know who that is and when we're going to get started, but it'll be next month, we'll get the... We'll get things rolling with some informational meetings, probably a steering committee, public informational meetings. And we're looking, probably the calendar year to take for that through all 2013.
And again, anybody who wants to get heavily involved in that, please let Scott or Karen know.
Yeah, we're taking names, we're writing names down, folks, folks who are coming out of the woodwork that, you know, in the public and, you know, development community, that are interested in participating in a committee or one of the way, one way or the other, let us know. And if you have other names too, other folks that you think might be interested or are interested, let us know.
Okay. Any other announcements up here? Seeing none, I guess we're ready to adjourn. I have a motion.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.